I would like to call the special meetings of the Public Finance Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successor, Successor Agency, and City Council to order. City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Rounds.
Here.
Councilmember Zamora.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sarno.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Members of the Public Financing Authority and Waters Utility Authority receive one hundred and fifty dollars for their attendance at these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna do things a little differently. We're gonna bring the community closer to us and more involved. So at this time, the City of Santa Fe Springs will allow for an invocation to be offered at of its city, uh, city council meetings, and it's open to any faith or religion on any volunteer basis. Invocational speakers shall be limited to one minute. I would like to call upon Cindy Jarvis to lead today's invocation. Please stand, everyone.
Everyone. Jarvis, and today I have Tuesday's tidbits. My command is this: Love each other as I have loved you. John fifteen twelve. As we enter into this new year, let's ponder on the Damar Hamlin story. We all know who that is. Prayers across the US happened to cover Damar in prayer as we all watched the Buffalo Bills football player on live television take a really hard hit and collapse to the ground. ESPN commentators openly prayed during the broadcast, essentially bringing God back into our culture. This symbol of unity opens many doors for us as a city to put God on the forefront once again. Let's use this example as a stepping stone for our personal lives, putting God first, and let that carry over into how you perform as a city council. Thank you for all you do. Have a great meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to call upon Youth Leadership Committee to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Is it your name? Your grade, where do you go to school?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Dos. I'm here on behalf of the Youth Leadership Committee, and I currently attend Santa Fe High School as a senior. I also participate in the Youth Alive Club, the STEAM Club, and the golf team at my high school. Thank you.
You so much. For the introductions also, we'll be calling representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, who this time will be joining us through Zoom. I have Mr. Scott Summerfield from Cascade Punk Company, and I also have Raymond Van Cat from La Fel Manufacturing Company, two cities, two companies that have been in the city for quite a number of years and very respected. Thank you so much for attending the meeting during, um, through Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us.
If anyone is interested in making public comment on agenda items, please fill out a public comment card located in the back of the council chamber and hand it to the city clerk. For those joining us in Zoom, if you are interested in speaking on the agenda item, please raise your hand when the the item is called. The city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application or submitted a card before the item is voted upon. Any public comment not related to the agenda and will be heard under item number sixteen on the agenda. Item number six. AB one, two, three, four requires city council members to attend a conference or a seminar at the city's expense to provide a brief report at the next regular council meeting. At this time, I will ask Council, Councilmember Rounds to brief us of his, uh, involvement in the conference that he attended.
Thank you, Mayor. On June ninth, January ninth and tenth, I attended the Contract Cities Legislative Tours, uh, in, uh, annual conference in Sacramento. There was two days. Day one, uh, there was attorney that went over the new laws and that are gonna affect us both in the cities and on the streets for twenty twenty-three. We talked about affordable housing. There was a debate between, uh, two gentlemen, Senator Ben Allen and, uh, Aaron Eckhaus, that was quite interesting, on housing legislation. Uh, we talked about public safety, which affects all of us, and, uh, we had a local legislators from the state Capitol came over for questions and answers. As you, same weather that we had here a couple of weeks ago was the same thing in Sacramento, but ten times worse. So we were gonna, normally, we would go to the state Capitol to meet our legislators, but it was easier to bring each one of them over there independently to where we were. Uh, so on day two, uh, we had eight assembly members speak to us and four senators. So, um, like most politicians, they took up the entire day speaking, i- if you know what I mean, with questions and answers. Um, we, and also, we talked with Assembly Member Blanca Pacheco, who's our new Assembly Member for our district, and, uh, also, Senator Barb Archuleta, who's our senator and just got reelected. Uh, both conversations were very rewarding, and, uh, uh, I think a lot of good things are gonna come out about that. And to end the day, we ended up taking a tour of the state Capitol, which is under construction right now, so we only got to see part of that, so. Mayor, that's my report on my conference I attended.
Thank you, and I'm gonna piggyback off that. Um, we did a lot of that. The main thing is we're pushing a lot of housing, 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 but the sad part is that we have the numbers that we have to fill, but we have no space. There's a lot of cities that actually have the numbers, as in Signal Hill. The sad part is that there's no construction companies that wanna do it for the amount that, you know, L is allowed. So when it comes to the housing, as much as Wayne tells us we have to do housing, housing, it looks like it's never gonna be met, and it's gonna be an ongoing battle for, for a while. Another thing that, uh, Bill had talked about this, the street takeovers, regarding the street takeovers, what's going on, which is a really bad issue, what's going on, and of course, our officers know exactly what they're talking about. Um, they tried to pass a bill that if they catch anybody doing that, they're gonna remove the cars from the owners for thirty days. It was actually, um, beat because some legislator said, no, because that's not fair, because how are they gonna get to work? So they're gonna redo that bill, and hopefully, they're gonna come up with something to hopefully help so we can stop the, the street takeovers. You know, the weather was horrible. It was bad. Um, but when we met with Archuleta, he was very, uh, open about helping us with the pool. So we are gonna meet with Archuleta, or we were, they, he let us know exactly what, what we should do to hopefully we get funding, and he's very much a pro funding us for the pool. So hopefully this year, we'll have some kind of funding from Archuleta and some of the other elected officials up there, and we'll have our pool open again soon. Um, that's it. Thank you so much. So we're gonna, um, move a couple of items from six. Actually, we're gonna do item fourteen A and fourteen B only because that is that, that is gonna be the baseball and the Miss Santa Fe Springs, and we know you guys have to go to school and, and you guys don't really wanna deal with all, listen to us, so we're gonna move things around to fourteen A and fourteen B. Fourteen A, A is gonna be recognition of the Miss Santa Fe Springs Court for the community services, and also to introduce the Miss Santa Fe Springs Court. Um, Monique Cetera's Pageant Director, could you please go to the podium and speak?
Good evening, City Council, Madam Mayor. Um, thank you for having us today. I took over this pageant about six years ago, revamped it under the direction of the Abigail Barazza Foundation, and we were off for a couple of years due to COVID, but we came back strong last year. And we kind of revamped this program. We do a lot of things outside of the communities now, and we brought in Ms. Linda. She is from the Tournament of Roses Pasadena House. So we were able to actually do a few things with the Tournament of Roses, and we were the first court ever to have a private tour of the tournament house. It has never been done in like, I believe it's a hundred years, right?
Right.
So we're super proud of that. The girls have been working really hard out there in the community. They all had had separate projects that they brought to us, and they went ahead, spearheaded the, spearheaded those projects, and they did great things in the community. We, um, Caitlin actually worked with Polly's Project, which was, uh, I don't know, maybe you wanna come up and say a few words. So she kind of spearheaded it. It's with the homeless, and she did a fantastic job, so I'm gonna let her say a few words.
Hello, City Council. Hello, Madam Mayor. Hi, everybody else. Um, so what Polly's Project is, it's a nonprofit organization, um, that helps the homeless community, uh, within Los Angeles. They give out hygiene kits. This is actually what we did around Thanksgiving time with the city's help and with our own personal, uh, like, the high schools' help. We were able to put up around, like, over a hundred hygiene kits together, and we were able to pass them out in Los Angeles to the displaced population. And it honestly, like, being able to see the change that we were able to make with our, um, titles as Miss Santa Fe Springs and the Miss Santa Fe Springs account on Instagram, it really, like, it touches your heart, tugs at your heartstrings, being able to know we can make a difference in somebody else's lives. Thank you.
You wanna introduce the court?
Of course. So I am going to introduce our Miss Santa Fe Springs Queen, Melissa Flores. We have Princess Caitlin. Princess Alexis. Princess Jody. And Princess Sadie. This is your twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Miss Santa Fe Springs Court.
We also have awards for you for certificate of recognition, recognition of your outstanding efforts to participate in acts of service. The City of Santa Fe Springs and City Council commends you for your selfless dedication to donate resources to those in need. We're proud to have you represent our city presented this twenty-fourth day of January. Thank you. We're presenting another group too. There is a video for both groups, but we'll do the video. Um, Mary Bell, do you wanna do the video now, or? Okay, we're gonna do the video now, and then we'll welcome the other group in. Thank you so much. I do have to say, I've been involved with the Abigail Barazza Foundation for, since day one, and I have to say, these girls, you guys have outdid yourselves. What you guys have done, given back to the community, what five young women have done says so much about you girls, and we're very thankful and proud that you are here in Santa Fe Springs, so thank you so much. Um, onto the second recognition. It's to the recognition of Santa Fe Springs High School Baseball Team for Community Service. Can I please have Pierre Romo, head baseball coach, come to the podium? The entrance he made. Yeah. Line up all over here, guys. Just come on in.
It looks like a it's like a football team.
Don't let the fire marshal see this. Okay, uh, we good?
We can't see you at all, but it's okay.
Make sure the fire marshal don't shut us down here, okay, guys? Um, uh, just wanted to say, uh, thank you, uh, to the city council, uh, uh, Mayor Martin, uh, for having us here, uh, recognizing these boys, uh, for their hard work, uh, what they did uh, with, for the community. Um, they've been in it, they've been doing this for a couple of years now, um, and, you know, showing the, uh, getting the recognition, um, to just show, you know, the payoff of their hard work, and, uh, this is a really good thing with the city supporting them, um. Just thanking guys so much. We appreciate you. Uh, thank you for the, you know, the city supporting us. Um, and thank you for everything you guys have done. And, uh, let's go ahead and hand out certificates. Thank you for the certificates as well, and, um, Ms. Barazza as well, thank you for having us participate. Uh, yes, you will, for sure, and, uh, thank you. Uh, the boys participated, obviously, in the toy drive. Uh, they did the, uh, in, uh, the garden cleanup, uh, for the senior, the senior citizen, uh, community garden. Uh, put a lot of work in there, put in about a six-hour day, right? Um, another four-hour day with, uh, Ms. Barazza, and, uh, uh, these boys are, you know, coming together as a unit and, you know, a brotherhood, uh, trying to stick together as our season is getting, uh, uh, around the corner, and this community stuff, uh, you know, hopefully shows them some unity and, uh, you know, work ethic down the road as well, uh, as we at Santa Fe High School and Santa Fe Baseball try to put, uh, you know, put out good men, good product as, uh, they move on in their life. So, uh, with that being said, uh, was the Okay, Santa, uh, here we go. Listen up. In recognition of your outstanding efforts to participate in acts of service, the Santa Fe Springs City Council commends you for being a role model to our youth by setting an example of giving back through the community service. Best wishes on a successful academic school year and baseball season. So with that being said, uh, I'm gonna call you guys up, uh, freshmen first, collect. Um, I guess we're gonna have to stick around. Just take a picture, okay?
One second. Could we take a, take a picture first?
Yeah, let's do, you guys, just take a picture first.
And that way
that way we can filter everybody out. Let's get in the corner.
Hey, we're back there.
You know, like, you spring up the back of how we started, like, so beating you.
Okay, along with that, as we, uh, present this, um, I just want to also, uh, put out there that, you know, these boys, uh, putting back into just their school, they, uh, started, we call them the tailgate boys. Um, those guys were at football games, home games, uh, you know, helping out, uh, providing, you know, free food and chips, sodas for all the fans coming in, and, um, you know, it was a really big deal. It turned into over three hundred people and students, um. You know, they started some of that. It was, uh, Jerry Ramos. Um, is he here? Brandon, Brandon Acosta. All right, Danny Gonzalez. Okay, so, so those are some of the three boys that actually gave, uh, really came back to their high school and, uh, you know, started something new, um, which was great. Like I said, we had over three hundred, uh, kids and, and parents show up at the end. It was a beautiful thing. Um, also like to thank, uh, Mayor Martin and, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Jay Sarno for donating the stuff. Uh, you know, no questions asked. Um, I know they do not like being recognized about, for stuff like that, but um, that was a very big help for these young men because they were at one point coming out of their own pocket, and, uh, you know, uh, Mayor Martin and, uh, Mayor, uh, Pro Tem Jay Sarno really helped them out with that stuff, so, uh, they deserve a, a round of applause. Okay, with that being said, we'll, uh, get moving here. Julian Valdez. Come on down. Xavier, Xavier Segala. Adrian Valdez. Rafael Ramos. Fabian Solis. Caesar Avalos. Thomas Cisneros. Diego Echeverria. He, there you go. Devin Mora. Ian Castaneda. Diego Valdez. Jordan Gutierrez. Matthew Molina. Lyric Castillo. Connor Gamel. Matthew Basara. Yep. Jayden Grewell. Solis Hernandez, I'll say this, all right. JV guys. James Rubio. Isaiah Rangel. Antonio Garcia. Daniel Ramos. Matt Mul, uh, Robert Maldonado. Javier Colon. Joseph Rodriguez. Matthew Leva. Finjan Salinas. Jesse Gonzalez. Eric Valdivia. Nathan Pope. Nathan Pope. Isaiah Martin. Dominic Magdalenas. Dominic Magdalenas. Junior Garcia, because I don't like saying his first name. Felix Flata. Matthew Cisneros. Andrew Lopez. Anthony Castaneda. Good one. Ready? Raro Ramos. Steven Mendoza. Daniel Gonzalez. Derek Leader. Brandon Acosta. Nathaniel Zaladon. Adrian Jimenez. Rosiah Hurtado. Johnny Garcia. Brendan Mancheca. Matthew Rubio. Aaron Barazza. Drake, Draky Drake Davis. Air Jordan. Jimenez. No Tim Molina. Bash Macias. Matthew Valencia. Angel Rangel. Micah Hernandez. Jayvon Acosta. Nick Alvarez, Nico. Pite Lopez. Tyler Cardona. And Matthew Fonseca, that boy Matthew. All right, guys. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Hold on, Coach.
Hey, Gabe, how you doing? Thank you.
Um, hold on, I, I just wanna congratulate and say thank you to Mike, Gabriel, Pierre, uh, Monique, you know, the, the young women and men that you guys are breeding into our community and, and making them understand that you guys are something bigger than just a team, that this is about community. This is, thank you to the families that allow these people to help mold your kids, because at the end of the day, this is about all of us, not just about when you go home, what your kids are doing at home, but outside of your house, and having great mentors mentor your kids and trusting in them to do the right thing. So I wanna thank you guys for the hard work and dedication that these young kids are doing today, and it's overwhelming because what these kids are doing today is just unheard of. And we hope this continues because you're grooming them to be not just good young men today, but for the future, and hopefully they'll be successful. And thank you, ladies, because you guys are outstanding. You guys are one of the brightest things that come out of Santa Fe Springs on a day-in and day-out basis, because you guys really do help, and I thank you guys for your service. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we already see you? Huh? You already seen?
I know. Thank you.
Any other comments regarding this from the council?
Uh, I like to say something real quick before everybody leaves is Miss Santa Fe Springs, I can remember years ago all this happening, but I've never seen it so glorified and what it is today. Thank you for Monique, and I am so proud of the Santa Fe Chiefs baseball team, and for two reasons. One is, uh, Pierre Romo, and two is the principal at Santa Fe, Craig Campbell, that I coached both of those in Little League. And to see where they're at today, I just, i- it just really warms my heart. Thank you, guys.
I also wanted to say, excuse me, I also wanted to say to our Miss Santa Fe Springs
I also wanted to say, excuse me, I also wanted to say to our Miss Santa Fe Springs Court and Monique Brazza, I know you do a fabulous job in getting everybody together and getting this going on. I've seen you everywhere. Thank you so much. It was so nice. Every event that we went to, you were there and you're so sweet. You come up, shake hands. You try and help the kids with their crafts. You come up with new ideas. I remember that at the Clark estate and all, all the other places that you've been to. So I would, from the bottom of my heart, really say thank you for everything that you did and that you continue to do. After you leave and go to college and do whatever it is that you are doing, come back, come back and give back to our community because that's the, the greatest gift of all. And they're gone already, but I wanted to say to them, the baseball, I mean, we, the sports are everything, even way back. My dad told me, get the kids in sports. It's very important that they're in sports. They learn teamwork, they learn effort. And, you know, they're not on the streets, they're not causing problems. They learn how to camaraderie together. So kudos to all the coaches. I know how hard it can be to keep all these kids together, but they seem to be doing just a great job with, with 50 of them here. You see how, how nice and organized, but I want to thank them. So thank you so much. It's been a pleasure having you this whole year.
If I could add just what everybody else is saying, just to, you know, girls, you guys come out every day, you know, wherever you may be. You know, there's a spotlight on you guys and you guys just shine all the time. So it's great to see that whether you guys are in the classroom, whether you're out of the classroom and out in the community. You know, we have a lot of young, young women who look up to you guys saying, hey, how could I be the next princess or how could I be the next queen? And of course, you guys are just awesome role models and it's great to see role models at just such a young age. You know, and see you guys are involved where you guys have partnerships and teamwork. And, you know, camaraderie, it's, it's, it's a big thing. We're lacking a lot of discipline when it comes to our kids these days. And you guys uphold, you know, the role, the true sense of what dignity and respect is. I just want to thank you. And I know, and I want to echo that to the baseball team. It's great to see. I remember before we would have the football team real involved and, you know, it's great to see the baseball team taking over that, you know, baton and, and you guys doing your, you know, you guys doing your part. So thank you and God bless you guys.
Thank you.
There we go. Item number seven. Public Finance Authority Agenda. We have two consent items. Is there a motion and approval for items seven A and seven B?
I'll move seven A, seven B.
There's a second. Perfect. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item number eight, Water Utility Authority Agenda. We have three consent items. Is there a motion for the approval of items number eight A through eight C?
I'll move eight, eight through C.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Item number nine is the Housing Successor Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion and approval for item number nine?
I'll move.
I second.
No, go ahead.
I'll, I'll move. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item number 10, Successor Agency Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for the approval of item number 10?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item number 11, City Council Agenda. We have eight consent items, which is A through H. Is there a motion for the approval of item of City Council Agenda? A, A through eight H?
I'll move A through H.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. New business, item number 12, Custodial Services Agreement. I would like to call upon Public Dirks Director, Noe Negretti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. What Chad before you is consistent with looking at agreements that are set to expire soon. We have a brief presentation on our Custodial Services Agreement and I want to call upon Kevin Perriman, our Municipal Services Manager, to make that presentation.
Mayor, City Council. For that before you is a Custodial Services Agreement. This current agreement was brought, was entered into on mid-May of 2018. The original agreement was for three years with two one-year options for a total of five years. And that agreement will be expiring at the end of May of this year. The scope of work has been met since the contract's inception. Double E, which is the vendor's quality of work, has met the outlined contract standards and responsiveness has been outstanding. Next slide. So we are requiring, bring before you direction from you as well. I recommend two options. Option one is negotiate a contract renewal with the current vendor and bring back to council. And option two is issue requests for proposal bids to solicit other vendors to perform custodial services. That's my.
Thank you, Kevin. So that concludes our report. We're happy to take any questions. Should the council have any?
Does anybody have any questions? Do we have, we take a?
I'll move for option one.
Oh, second that.
And then we'll, we'll do option one after the vote if everybody agrees and then we'll do negotiations and then you guys come back with the contract.
Yeah, if you do vote for option one, we would go back to the vendor double E. We would try and negotiate a price and then a term. We would recommend at least a three-year term, but that's something we can bring back to you. And then we can get your direction if you're okay with the price and if you're okay with the term.
Thank you.
So I'd like to say something real quick. I'd like to say that they do such a great job. They're very nice when we, you know, they come in and we're still here. And they're just cleaning up and I just, just can't thank them enough for all the work that they do and how well they do it. So if you can relay that message to them, if you see them.
She's right here in front of you.
Thank you.
She's right here in front of you. So yeah, you can, she heard that.
Yeah, great job. Yes.
I'll say she's very committed. She did ask me if we could make this fast because she has to go to police services and clean it after the meeting.
Negotiate right now and then we'll.
No, I'm just, thank you. What I'm saying is that, as well, every time you see her, she's always smiling. She's always working there. And she's literally hands-on. You will see her 11 o'clock at night, herself working and six o'clock in the morning working and it shows, her work shows. So thank you. Gracias. So direction is to negotiate price and they come back with everything.
Madam Mayor, Madam, Madam Mayor, you do have a motion on the floor so we can get a vote?
Okay, roll call, please.
You can just do, you can just ayes or nays. Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So ordered. Thank you. Gracias. Item number 13, Authorization to Purchase of Two Pierce Arrow Fire Apparatus from South Coast Equipment Incorporated and Financing. I'd like to call upon Fire Chief Chad Van Merton.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you. On June of 2022, council approved the purchase of two new fire engines as part of the 2223 Fiscal Year General Equipment Replacement Fund. That's to replace the 2008 Pierce that you see on the screen right now and the next screen, the 2012 Pierce engine. NFPA recommends replacement of these rigs every 12 years. Currently, Pierce's build time is approximately three years, which respectively is going to have these engines in service for 18 years and 15 years. It's thanks to the hard work of our staff from both fire and the shop that we're able to keep these equipment and, and service for as long as we can. Unfortunately, since the approval of budget, Pierce has had an 18% price increase. Through negotiations and hard work of our apparatus committee negotiates with our sales rep, we were able to get this price reduced down to approximately 3%. Fortunately, this increase means that it's an extra approximately $35,000 per engine. So I'm asking this evening, council to appropriate an additional $70,114.50 from the General Equipment Replacement Fund to fully fund these two apparatus. That's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any council have any questions? No question?
I'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Great job, chief. Presentations. So we go back to the presentations and go to 14C, Introduction of Promoted Santa Fe Springs Department of Fire Rescue Battalion Chief. I would like to call upon again Fire Chief Chad Van Merton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mike Glaze, if I can get you up to the podium, please. Counsel, I'd like to introduce to you Mike Glaze. He's been working for the city for approximately 27 years. He started here as an auxiliary in 1995. He worked 11 years as a firefighter paramedic, nine years as a fire engineer, and six years as a captain. I'm happy to announce that on June, I'm sorry, January the 16th, he was promoted to battalion chief. Mike currently lives in Yorba Linda. He's married for 13 years to his wife, Rachel, and he has two sons, Charlie and Connor. Mike got interested in the fire service, interestingly enough, after the 1994 earthquake destroyed his apartment, the North Ridge earthquake. My coaches used to coach high school track for approximately 15 years where they won the state championship in 2004. Mike advocates special needs education and supports programs in autism disorder and ADHD. When he's not here at work, he enjoys building model electric trains and loves to swim in the ocean with his boys. With that, I'd like to introduce Battalion Chief Mike Glaze.
Thank you, chief. Thank you for having me tonight, here tonight, council members and Mayor Martin. It is my honor and privilege to assume this position with the, the city of Santa Fe Springs and its fire department and the California Fire Service as a, as a whole. I look forward to the, the opportunities and challenges that come with the position and helping us move forward into the future.
Thank you. Thank you. On, let's see, on to item D of that, Introduction of Finance and Administrative Services Intern, Oscar Jimenez, an administrative assistant to Leslie Alvarado. I would like to call upon Finance Manager, Lana.
Hopefully I don't break this. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councils. Finance Administrative Services Department recently welcomed our new finance intern, Oscar Jimenez. He graduated in July 2022 from Cal State University of Fullerton with a bachelor's degree in finance. He's also thinking to pursue his master's degree in finance in the near future. As you join the city, Oscar's worked at targets and national equipments and service companies. Oscar, Oscar is currently living with his family in the city of South Gate. He enjoys sports. With that, please join me to welcome Oscar.
Hi, everyone. I just want to give a special thanks to Lana and Travis for this opportunity. And thank you to city staff. You guys have been very welcoming and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, Leslie was feeling under the weather today, so we don't have her today, but we'll bring her to a future meeting.
Fifth annual planning month photo contest winners. I would like to call upon Assistant Director of Planning, Huang Nguyen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before I introduce the winners of the photo contest, I just wanted to give you a quick background and some details of the photo contest. This past year, 2022, the planning department hosted our fifth annual photo contest. The contest ran from September 16th through October 31st. We got quite a number of great entries. Planning staff reviewed all the entries to make sure they met all the contest rules. And we selected the top six photos. From there, on December 12th, at the planning commission meeting, the planning commissioners, who coincidentally also includes council member rounds, selected the top three photos. But tonight, I do want to give special thanks to the planning commissioners for selecting the winners. As well as the city manager's office, Director of Planning, Wayne Morrell, and Code Enforcement Officer, Louis Colazo, for their monetary contributions. So the winners that were selected, the top three winners will receive a certificate of recognition and a monetary award. First place photo will receive $200. Second place will receive $125 and a third place winner will receive 75. Also, the first place photo will be featured in a future cover of the whole things Santa Fe Springs. Before I introduce the winners, I just wanted to point out that if you haven't visited the display, the top six photos are on display at the city library and will be on display for the entire month of January. So without further ado, I will call up the three winners, starting with the third place winner, Henry Foot, with his photo.
Do you want us to do individual or group?
Next, we have the second place winner, Natalie Medina, with photo titled Spooky Garden House. And last but not least, the first place winner, Amber Saldana, with the photo titled Picnic at the Park. That concludes my presentation. It was purely coincidental, but if you didn't notice, all three photos was at Heritage Park. So if you haven't been there, feel free to go visit.
Thank you. And before we go on to the next one, we actually have to introduce someone that I'm very honored to be here in our city now. Captain Hammond. She is our new captain. Come on up. She is our new captain for CHP. Homegrown from Pioneer.
That's right.
And a female. Yes, even better.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you and the city council for having me here tonight. I was raised in Westwood Ear, so I did go to the rival Pioneer High School, but it is an honor to be here again. I am the captain, second female captain ever of the Santa Fe Springs CHP office. And it is an honor and a privilege to serve this community again and give back to those who helped raise me. And it's for me, one of my first objectives I have with me here today, Officer Zach Salazar, who's my public information officer. And one of the first things I asked him to do was increase our footprint in the community because I think for too long, and the CHP in particular, has not been good about being out there and discussing who we are, what we can do and how we can help our communities and the programs that we have. And he has And he has done a phenomenal job, uh, with all that. So we, and I want to say thank you actually to the city because without your assistance, we would not have been successful in completing half of the programs that we've. Set out to accomplish. So I really appreciate that. One of them being our biggest one was, was our chips for kids. And I don't know if you saw the court left before I had a chance to thank them, but. Several of their photos that they, uh, that you featured in your video were actually at our operation Jingle All The Way. Where we gave away over, uh, twelve hundred toys and served us six hundred families here in the Santa Fe Springs area and we were able to provide a hot meal for them. I want to say thank you as well to the community services department who has been phenomenal in providing, uh, anything that we've requested. We greatly appreciate that. As you can imagine, sometimes we have to beg, borrow and steal when it comes to, uh, you know, getting services that we need because we're. A state agency and so, uh, it takes four hundred miles for information to come back and around. So it takes a long time. So I want to say thank you so much for your assistance. One of the many things that we're doing, uh, specifically here in the Santa Fe Springs area, uh, this year, we're Saint Paul High School. Is going to be hosting our every fifteen minute program, which we, uh, actually will be hosting, I believe, at Santa Fe High School next year. It'll be up for their turn. And so this is a big endeavor for us and we really want to get the message out. Uh, you know, especially I see all these young men that were here for the, the softball or the baseball team and. Uh, Officer Salazar and I were talking like, we have to get them not only in the every fifteen minute program, but we have a program or a class that we put on. Once a month at our office here off of Orin Day and it's our, uh, Start Smart Program for teenage drivers. So I would. Strongly, strongly encourage any teenager and their parent, uh, especially new drivers to come. It's extremely educational. We're actually looking to see if that can't be instituted. Uh, as some type of mandate at the local high schools or strongly encouraged so that we can get the message out about. The dangers with distracted driving, as you discussed, street takeovers, uh, because that seems to be on the rise. So it's an extremely beneficial program. But again, I just want to say thank you and just a little, I, I know I mentioned a little bit about me, but I've been employed with the department for twenty-one years. I'm one of two female captains. In the Los Angeles area. And again, it's my honor and privilege to serve this community. So thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you. Captain, when you want to come here with your, with Salazar? It, it's great because since the, since, uh, she jumped in. I've haven't had like salad. I've been on the phone with her on how many times of everything you guys want to be involved in and so excited, uh. And their new endeavor is going to be the Christmas float too. You guys want to be part of that and thank you. Doors are open to whatever you guys want to do. Yeah, we would love to see you more out here. Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, now, uh, I'm number F proclamation on January ninth, twenty twenty-three as law enforcement appreciation day. I would like to call on Director of Police Services, Dino Torres.
Thank you, Mayor. Law enforcement officers are a critical part of our lives woven into the every fabric of living in America. They keep our neighborhoods safe and help us help ensure that whatever it is you need to do, you can do with peace of mind. National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day was created by multiple organizations in two thousand and fifteen to express their gratitude for officers in the United States. In support of their services, citizens are encouraged to do their part in thanking law officers. Law enforcement officers need to be shown that the difficult career path they have chosen is recognized by the people who they protect and uphold the law for. With over nine hundred thousand officers in the United States, it is essential that we support law enforcers during difficult times. And a holiday dedicated to them does just that. The day also raises awareness on the importance of understanding that the difficult decisions taken by police officers are in the best interest of citizens and the law. I'd like to now hand it over to the city clerk to read the proclamation.
Whereas the city of Santa Fe Springs is proud to have dedicated police officers who put their lives on the line to keep our community safe. And whereas these officers stand as leaders and teachers, educating the community about the importance of public safety. And whereas a national law enforcement appreciation day is an opportunity to show our support for law enforcement. Now therefore be resolved at the city council of the city of Santa Fe Springs. Does hereby proclaim the day of January ninth, twenty twenty-three as law enforcement appreciation day. Thank you.
I like to, uh, Captain Ruiz, please come up. Captain Hammond, please come up. Yes. All three of us? Thank you. Um, and if we have any retired of any department chair, please come up. We would like to thank you and, and recognize you as well. Please, Mr. Guy Ton.
Are you looking at Mike?
Yes. Mr. Guy Ton is a retired sheriff. He had many years on, very respected. Detective, yes. How many years, Mr. Guy Ton? Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you again for what you do. There's not a. There not enough to what you guys are getting paid for.
No, just thank you. Um, on behalf of myself and the city, thank you so much. We pray for you every day that you guys go home every night to your families. Thank you. Um, item number fifteen. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use a raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment. On non-agenda items only, the city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment in person, you will have an opportunity once the city clerk announces your name. You'll have three minutes to speak. City clerk, do you have any members of the public that wish to speak?
Madam Mayor, we have three public speakers. The first one's Tammy Corbett. Hi, I'm Tammy Corbett and I'm here to oppose the sidewalk being put on Ballant in between Ringwood and Florence Boulevard. And due to the sidewalk being put in. The whole neighborhood opposes it. I've got a survey done by every one of the neighborhoods on my side, the west side of Ballant. Due to the landscaping, the trees. The plants and stuff will be uprooted. And so I oppose it. And, uh, my neighbor's here to also oppose it and he said he could, he's. He's going to speak next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bob Garrick.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, my name is Bob Garrick. Uh, last time I was here was about thirty-two years ago. And it was actually for the same subject. I circulated the petition that time. And, um, nine of the ten homeowners signed it. I did wasn't able to contact the tenth one, but they all opposed it. I would just agree with everything, agree with everything Tammy said, um, and say that, um. It, we were surprised that there was just unanimous opposition. It would, there would be walls that would have to be partially demolished. It would affect sprinklers, landscaping. Um, and we really feel that there's other ways the city can certainly find to spend the money. Tammy mentioned to me a few days ago, and I didn't know this because I have quite a few limits on myself, unfortunately. But she walks on the other three neighboring streets, Maid, Maid, Maidstone, Ringwood and Florence. And she says that on all those side plate streets, they have sidewalks and all of them have places that need repairing. Sometimes they're raised up two and a half inches and. So there's plenty of places to spend the money, uh, rather than on people that don't want it. So I just hope that the city council does now what they did about thirty-two years ago when I was here. And let's just not have a sidewalk. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Francis Carbahal.
Francis Carbahal, oh, sorry, ninety-one nineteen Arley Avenue, Santa Fe Springs. Thank you, Mayor and council for letting me speak. I'm here tonight as the chairperson of Santa Fe Springs. As, uh, Madam Mayor Juanita, uh, Martin knows and the rest should, um, I want to publicly advise. That our counterpart Mayor Marito Mario Barac was passed away last Friday in Navajo, Mexico. He would had his burial on Saturday. So, um, I'd like to thank the council for. Last year we got together and we had the delegation go down and come up. And, um, this was something he was very proud of. He was very proud of the organization. Uh, this, his passing is, is very unexpected. But I also like to thank the council who helped us last year in the delegation. And again, with at that time, Mayor Annette Rodriguez for the lovely, uh, watch and, uh, set that you gave him. He was very happy and he wore that. And to, uh, Mayor, uh, excuse me, council member Jay Sarno and now Mayor Martin for helping with the food. And to Joe Angel for assisting with stuff. You weren't on there yet, uh, Bill, but you showed up on our event. So I just want to thank you for that. And lastly, now on my other hat, I am now the chairperson of the Santa Fe Springs Women's Club. And to let you know, we are having our quarter mania Sunday, March twelfth. Tickets are twenty dollars and I have your tickets. It's a lovely present. It's all fun. And really quick, he doesn't like to get much kudos, but I always give it to him. To Director Wayne Morrell, who has helped graciously the women's club for every event. And this is not that I have to twist his arm. So I'd like to thank you for that and thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes our speakers.
Thank you. Uh, public comments are now closed. Item number sixteen, I would like to call up on acting city manager Travis Hickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, good evening, members of the council, the public and people watching on Zoom. Just a couple of quick items to report. Uh, first is, uh, the city council has taken action, uh, to direct, uh, city staff to, um. Prepare a contract to hire an interim city manager. Uh, that contract will come forward at the next regular council meeting, which is February seventh. Uh, the direction is to hire Mr. Tom Hatch. He's a former city manager for the city of Costa Mesa. An interim city manager at city of Orange and has over thirty-five years of municipal government experience working for a number of agencies. Uh, as a city manager, deputy city manager, uh, human resources office, as well as a director of community services. So. Uh, a well-rounded breadth of experience, uh, to help the city as we, uh, uh. Begin the recruitment for our permanent city manager. Uh, next slide, I would also like to announce, uh, the city was memorial scholarship program will open on January thirtieth. That will run through March sixteenth. Uh, people who, uh, will. Be interested in this program would be seniors at a local high school. Uh, they must be a city resident to be eligible. There's a total of six awards to be made, uh, for seventeen hundred and fifty dollars each. And, and that would be for, uh, again, high school seniors, uh, who will be going on to college in the fall. Um, beginning on January thirtieth, there'll be additional information on the city's website. Uh, and that will, uh, include the application for the program and that will run through March sixteenth. So. I also wanted to mention, uh, last week on January nineteenth, I attended the chamber economic forecast, the chamber of commerce economic forecast. It was very informative as it always is. Uh, our speaker again this year was Dr. Chris Thornburg. And so. Uh, he's number one, very entertaining, but number two, uh, I think has a very common sense approach to, to looking at the economy and. Kind of distilling data into terms that people can understand. And you know, my big takeaway from that event was that. Uh, you know, he, he, he thinks a recession is, is not coming. Uh, we think the economy is going to be fairly flat. And so there was a lot of good data from that seminar that we will, uh, be, uh, factoring into our budget coming up for next fiscal year. And lastly, I want to announce, uh, that, uh, Mr. Noe Negrete. Has been with the city for sixteen years, eleven and a half years as a director of public works. Uh, his last day with the city will be next Friday, February third. And Noe will be, uh, moving on to, uh, pursue other opportunities. So this will be his last, uh, council meeting, uh, here with the city. It's been great to, uh, work with Noe in the, uh, twelve years that I've been here with the city and, and he will certainly be missed. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Noe.
Thank you, Travis. I got a, a slew of things I want to report on here. Um, before we get to the pictures, just talk about projects. Uh, so the Slurry Seal project, uh, will be coming to a close tomorrow. Uh, we did get delayed because of the rain. I want to thank all the residents out there for moving your cars several times, uh, so that you're not in the way. I got a lot of positive feedback, uh, from a lot of residents. Our, our, our streets definitely needed it. Um, the slurry ceiling we done tomorrow, uh, those streets that got slurred will obviously have their striping done shortly thereafter. Um, and then we'll have that project complete. Uh, second project that is also near completion is the Los Santos Park Playground Project. Again, the rain did delay that project. And, uh, we're hopeful that by the end of next week, we'll be able to take down the temporary fence and open up that playground. The city is preparing, uh, for a, a soft opening, uh, celebration of that. Uh, probably in February and more news to come on that, uh, when that data comes. Uh, the third project is, um, a partner project with the school district, Little Lake School District. Uh, Lakeview Park Playground, uh, if you recall late last, late or mid, mid last year, we entered into a, uh, agreement with them. And they've been doing all of their playgrounds at the, uh, several schools. Uh, ours will be the last one in, installed and they're looking for a completion date. Uh, end of May, beginning of June, uh, to get that done right before the summer. And, uh, last other project update, uh, Orin Day Whiteland Traffic Study. Uh, staff has completed all the counts. Uh, I have just received a draft in my review and, uh, hopeful to bring that, uh, sometime in February to the council. That's the projects. Let's talk about the equipment, what you have on the screen here. Um, just want to, uh, celebrate, uh, two things in the mechanic shop. There's two lifts. They're recently purchased as part of our budget, a, uh, permanent one and a mobile one. Uh, this is the permanent one inside the garage. Uh, it's a four post, uh, for medium duty vehicles. Uh, and transportation vehicles. Uh, the old lift was approximately twenty twenty-five years old. Uh, and there's one on the outside that I don't have a picture of, but that's more the for the heavy vehicles. Um, located outside the garage, uh, for boom trucks and backhoes and skip loaders. And the mechanics greatly appreciate, uh, the ability now to put a car in a lift with a one man as opposed to two man having to operate that. And number two, I, I wanted to show this before I left because it, it has a lot of meaning for the department. This truck here is a water installation vehicle, uh, has a crane for lifting pipe and trench plates and heavy objects. Uh, that will assist in, uh, installing water pipeline, uh, or fixing repairs for that matter. There's also an air compressor attached, uh, so they can attach small tools. Uh, but more so than just being a truck. Um, the staff, and I'm going to give the staff hundred percent credit for this of coming up with this idea. And, um, we had an, a long employee, uh, that passed away of cancer. Um, a couple of years ago now, that, that time flies. Uh, his name was Jim Palotto. And, um, he was a long-term member of the, uh, water installation crew. And they asked me if they could name this truck, uh, in his name. Um, so on the side door, it's, uh, Big Jim. And, um, a better idea is they put the vehicle number thirteen sixteen. And it doesn't mean much, probably the community, but, uh, that was his employee number. Uh, so first time that we've ever, uh, done this for a vehicle. Uh, typically it's a three-letter, uh, three-number vehicle, uh, but I thought it was, uh, a great way to commemorate someone. Uh, who, uh, really made his mark in our department and will forever now live, uh, through that truck. And if you ever met Big Jim, he was about six, seven, six, six. Uh, but he had the best sense of humor. And, uh, I'm sure he's laughing, uh, every time he sees this truck and I'm sure he's laughing at the guys trying to do an install. And, uh, if you ever had, uh, to do a dig a trench on a hot day, uh, I'm sure a little bit of humor goes a long way, uh, assisting the staff. hot day, I'm sure a little bit of humor goes a long way, assisting the staff with getting that work done. So I wanted to thank the Council for providing this equipment and vehicle that provides for a more efficient and a safer operation for us to do our work. And last, just my last meeting, just want to thank the community. A lot of people I know now by face, by name, really important to me to make the community better. Hopefully we did that. And just like, wanted you to know that you have a staff that is very professional and takes pride in their work. And that's something I can't teach. I can't motivate. So remember that, that the city is in great hands. And it has been my honor and privilege to serve as a director. Thank you.
Thank you, Noe. And Wayne?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I also nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Dino?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last week, the Department's Family and Youth Intervention Program had the opportunity to be at two schools, Rancho Santa Gertrudas and Santa Fe Springs Christian, to provide our diversity component through Camphell Productions. The assembly presentations were titled "Time to Shine" and focused on developing leadership skills that will move the students towards a brighter and better tomorrow. The Family and Youth Intervention Program and its diversity component is designed to help schools, parents, students, and community members create safer and more productive places to learn and live. So there are Rancho, which is on the left, the picture on the left, and then Santa Fe Christian School on the right. If anyone's been there, Rancho Santa Gertrudas went through a complete remodel. So it's very nice. Both schools are very nice, but I hadn't been to Rancho. They have a number of murals there. And this is one that I thought it was pretty interesting. I can't read it from here. Yes, it says "Our Journey" on the left, "Our Heritage" in the center, and "Our Roots" on the left. So I thought it was interesting. They have several, but they've done a nice job there, the projects. I think Noe did some projects there recently on the parking. And so it's a, it's a nice place. Both schools are very, very nice. And they had some nice assemblies there. Next slide, please. Coffee with the Cop. We will be having our first Coffee with the Cop of two thousand twenty-three, and that'll be next Wednesday, and that'll be from eight-thirty at ten-thirty. And this one will be at the Police Services Center. Typically, we've had them at schools. We've had them at Starbucks coffee shops. We've had a number over the years. And so this next one will be next week, February first, eight-thirty to ten-thirty. I have a short video that staff put together on social media. Woodyard PD, PSOs put that on there. So if you can play that really quick.
Join us for Coffee with the Cop at the Police Service Center on Wednesday, February first, between eight-thirty and ten-thirty.
See you there!
So it's a short video, to the point. You know, social media, everyone wants quickness. And so that's, those are things that we're going to start doing. Lastly, I'd like to introduce Captain Aaron Ruiz, who has a report for the audience and the Council. Thank you.
Dino, thank you, Dino. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. I just wanted to briefly update you. As you know, we were in communication, I was in communication with the City Council members over the weekend regarding recent gunfire incidents in Santa Fe Springs in our, in our neighborhood community. So this past weekend, we had three incidents where gunfire was reported. Two of those incidents occurred on Sunday, January twenty-second, the first being in the ninety-five-hundred block of Gambi. This was in the alley area. Reporting party reported gunfire. Officers responded, and they did find evidence of shell casings in the, the alleyway. That was at approximately two-thirty PM. Later that same evening, we, we responded to the ninety-one-hundred block of Corby regarding gunfire as well. And unfortunately, in that situation, we found a victim who had been struck. That was, we believe, in front of his residence. This was a male adult. It did not appear to be a, a random act. We think that there may have been some type of feud that preceded this, this incident. And then finally, yesterday evening, we had an incident in eleven, seven-hundred block of Roma where gunfire was reported as well. And that was somebody driving through and shooting rounds in the air in a vehicle. So we are aware of the situation. Obviously, that's a, a big concern of ours whenever there's gunfire or guns or gun violence in our, in our communities. But I just kind of wanted to let you know that we are on it. We're actively investigating that. Our detectives are gathering information. You know, it's, it's hard to predict when these types of encounters are going to come as far as the, the one where the individual was shot. But I, I guess, in speaking this evening, I just want to reiterate with the, the community because we enjoy such a partnership with this community in Santa Fe Springs. It's a, it's a close-knit community. If you've lived in the community, obviously, you know each other. But it's so important that you provide us with that information. And I know that sometimes providing information can be sensitive. So again, we have measures in place where information can be reported to us anonymously. And I just kind of want to reiterate, if you have any information regarding gunfire in neighborhoods or things that are going on illegally in our neighborhoods, if you don't want to, I guess, come in front of that, but you want to report it anonymously, we always encourage that. And we do have a tip line at the Woodyard Police Department. And that can be shared at the Police Service Center as well, but that, that number is five-six-two, five-six-seven-nine-two-nine-nine. If you have any information on these events, if you want to speak to a detective, if you want to reach out to myself, I would be happy to take that information and, and share it. The other thing I want to just kind of tell you is although we, we rely on members of the community, we also, you know, partner with neighboring agencies, you know, with the Sheriff's Department, gathering intelligence on what's going on. This past year, we've really partnered with the District Attorney Investigators with a team called CBIT. And that is, it's a proactive team that goes out and suppresses crime. And that's been just a, with, with everybody being stretched so thin in, in law enforcement these days, it's nice to, you know, link up with members of other law enforcement committees. In fact, with Captain Hammond here, you know, she's been a, a big part of, I guess, renewing that relationship with Woodyard PD. So, you know, I want to thank you for that as far as, you know, things that we have going on in the city. So it's just that you have a commitment from both, you know, the CHP and Woodyard PD and everything that we do. And it's just, it becomes a force multiplier on that. Again, I just want to reiterate that if you can assist us, members of the public, I know many of you have Ring cameras. You might have some information that, that you, you gather. And if you feel comfortable coming out in front of that, if you don't and you want to remain anonymous, that tip line is available. So that's what I'm here for today. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you so much, Captain. Thank you. Thanks, Dino.
Thank you, Dino. Thank you, Captain Ruiz. Fire Chief Chad Van Meteren.
Travis, good evening again, Madam Mayor. Two quick items for you this evening. First slide, please. In addition to Battalion Chief Mike Glaz's promotion, we had two other promotions within the department. Up on the screen here, we have Fire Captain Kit Henson. Kit's been with the city for approximately ten years. He has a bachelor's degree in fire administration. He currently serves on the city's Honor Guard, and he's in charge of our MBA Phil the Boot Donation Driver Review. Kit is married and has his first baby on the way to the, find him lady in the upper right corner, Jess. And I wish Kit all the best luck as fire captain. Next up, next slide, please. We have Mike Tittleton. Mike Tittleton's been with the department for approximately four years. He's promoted to engineer as well on June sixteenth. Interesting with Mike, he was sponsored by Santa Fe Springs to attend the Fire Academy where he finished top of his class one and won the Top Cadet Award. We also sponsored him into the Paramedic School in two thousand and twenty, where he finished top of the class in Paramedic School. Mike's gun currently is going to take over our Hazardous Materials Coordinator, and we look forward to Mike serving in the position of fire engineer. Last up, next slide, please. January is firefighter cancer awareness month. Cancer is currently the leading cause of death for firefighters in the United States. Approximately seventy-five percent of all firefighters that are put on the memorial die from cancer. So this month, the Fire Department personnel will be reviewing various practices within the station and on the fire ground to reduce those risks of cancer. With that, that ends my report.
Thank you, Chad. Finance Manager Lana Deitch.
Madam Mayor and City Councils, I have two items to report tonight. Allow me to kickstart with the happy news. I would like to share that after living with the water father during raining season for thirteen-plus years, Pa and Vanessa at the warehouse excited to get a replacement. This project will take place on February sixth and anticipated to take about six weeks in good weather to complete. Congratulations to Vanessa and Pa. Now to the less exciting item. It is the budget season again. I would like to share this year's budget development process, which is creates a three-hundred-page budget document. The budget process is a continuous operations that includes phases of development, adoptions, implementation, adjustments, and oversight throughout the year. Our annual budget is prepared on July first to June thirtieth fiscal year. Through the development process, staff is constantly interact with the City Councils, the executive management team, staff, and community. Starting, started in January, we have started the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three's mid-year budget review. This is the initial step in the city's budget process. The city departments will identify trends and variants either to recommend adjustments or incorporate into the upcoming budget. We're anticipating to present the mid-year's budget review to the Council during the first meeting in March. The larger portions of the budget process is the developments of the new fiscal year budget. The majority of the budget development took place during February and March. This process include preparations of position summary, the labor distributions, and activity summary worksheet. During the months of April and May, the city manager will have the preliminary budget to review and meet with departments for final adjustments. Once that is done, Council's committees meetings will be held in May to go over the budget. When the budgets have been presented to these council subcommittees, finance will incorporate any recommended adjustments. The budget is then introduced to the City Council during the first meeting in June and adopt before June thirtieth. Happy budgeting. That end my report.
Thank you, Lana. And lastly, Director of Community Services, Maricela Bouders.
Thank you, Travis. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council and audience. I have several reports to share with you this evening. Wanted to start off with our Library Pub Trivia. The library's popular pub trivia program returned on January the thirteenth. The event was sold out, and the teams of friends competed to see who could correctly answer a hundred trivia questions and win gift cards. There were sandwiches and other snacks, and liquid therapy bartended and provided the beverages, which included signature cocktails and mocktails. So our next pub trivia program will be on August the eighteenth. Here's a video recapping the event. And then next, the library stuffed animal sleepover program was held last Friday, January the twentieth. So we had several of the children that came into the library on Friday afternoon to pick out their new stuffed animal. The children left their new animals at the library, and then they watched on social media as their new friends. They played Pictionary. They ate pizza. I was hoping they would eat vegetables, but they've got pizza instead. And they did other fun sleepover activities throughout the evening. The children came back to the library the next day to pick up their stuffed animals, and they shared with our staff that they really enjoyed the activity. Next, the library hosted its annual Author Day featuring Ernesto Cisneros and his book Ephron Divided. On Friday, January the twentieth, there were a hundred and eighty-seven students from Crescent, Jersey, Lakeview, and Rancho Santa Gertrudas Elementary Schools who attended the event. Each student received a copy of the book in December so that they could read it before the program. Mr. Cisneros spoke to the kids about his book. He read his favorite passage and answered questions for the students. The kids enjoyed a pizza lunch, and each class took a photo with Mr. Cisneros. Next, our preschool storytimes returned back to the library for the new year. Last week, we had over forty-five parents and kids listen to stories. They sang songs and assembled crafts. These programs are offered weekly until mid-May. Then the library STEAM program also returned in January with monthly programs offered on the third Wednesday of each month at six-thirty. The program teaches science, technology, engineering, art, and math concepts through live demonstrations and hands-on activities. Registration is required for this popular program. And then the library's next first Friday will be held on February the third at seven PM. A Beatles tribute band called Sergeant Peppers will play the group's greatest hits, and refreshments will be served, and reservations are not required. Then we have our Shamrock 5K event. Registration for the 5K is currently open. The event is going to be held on Saturday, March the eleventh, at Town Center Plaza. There'll be a toddler quarter dash for kids ages eight and under. Residents can register at www.sfsfunrun.org. Participants are encouraged to wear green or Shamrock attire as the theme is revolved around St. Patrick's Day. So early registration fees are ten dollars for the 5K and two dollars for the toddler run. Registration fees will increase on February the sixth to fifteen dollars for the 5K and five dollars for the toddler run. Also, participants may purchase an event T-shirt for an additional ten dollars. This year's finishers will receive a four-inch custom Santa Fe Springs Shamrock 5K medal. Also, in an effort to get our community ready for the 5K, the Community Service Department is offering a Couch to 5K Interval Training Program every Sunday starting January the twenty-ninth. The Couch to 5K Training Plan is for people fourteen years of age and older, and it's a five-week interval training program designed for beginners and intermediate levels. The group's going to be meeting every Sunday at Lake Center Athletic Park. The cost for the program is fifteen dollars. So if you're interested in registering, you can go to www.sfsrec.org. And then lastly, we have our Free Income Tax Preparation Program, and that's open to all our eligible residents. Registration for non-residents begins on the thirtieth. Appointments are offered on a first-come-first basis, and participants must have made sixty thousand dollars or less during two thousand and twenty-two in order to be eligible for the program. So for more information or to schedule an appointment, participants can call the Neighborhood Center. And then just lastly, I just wanted to thank Noe for his many years of service to our Santa Fe Springs community. I want to wish you the very best in your new career move, and thank you for your many years of friendship. And I'm going to miss working with you. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Maricela. Madam Mayor, that concludes our reports.
Thanks, Travis. Item number seventeen, Appointments to Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Councilmember Rodriguez, do you have any appointments today?
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have Parks and Rec and Senior Advisory, Johnny Hernandez. That's it. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Rounds, do you have any appointments?
I have one tonight. Mayor, to the Senior Advisory Committee, Dolores Romero.
Councilmember Zamora.
I have two. I have Marina Gurola for Historical Beautification and Hilda Zamora for Heritage Arts.
Mayor Pro Tem Sarno.
None tonight.
And I have none as well. And I have none as well. I have number 18, Council Comments. Councilmember Rodriguez, let's start off with you tonight.
Need to put my glasses on or I can't read my own writing. Okay. First off, I would like to, they already left, but I wanted to tell them Miss Santa Fe Springs Court and our baseball. Again, thank you so much. This was, the presentations were awesome. I want to thank everybody that had their presentations today. And congratulations on the promotions of our three personnel, fire personnel, Michael Glaze, Kit Henson, and Michael Tettleton. Chief Chad, thank you for coming back. I know you had a nice vacation and now you're rejuvenated and we'll be making a lot of calls to you this week. So thank you for being here and coming back from your vacation. Oscar Jimenez, welcome aboard. And I wanted to thank our planning for all the photos, the photo contest. I have two of those pictures from last year, and I had our staff ask them to put them in my office, and they're just so beautiful. And I would love to have all of them, but my office isn't big enough to keep all those beautiful pictures, but it's, they're really nice. Thank you. I had the opportunity to see Shannon at Storytime. She's our librarian, and she just came, popped up on my Instagram when I was working, so I just turned it on. And it was just so beautiful. She was teaching to the children, the babies and the toddlers, and they were running around the the library. And I just had a good time watching it, then I forgot to get back to work. It was just so fun. And I just wanted to tell her, she's not here today, but I just wanted to tell her, thank you. That is the cutest thing that our city does. Our staff, they work so hard to take care of our community, and the children are everything. So I just thought it was so cute. I'd like to thank our law enforcement, Captain Hammond, Captain, I'm sorry, Officer Salazar, and Captain Reese. And I know we have another officer outside. Please, thank you so much for everything that you do and that you protect us and make us feel safe. I really appreciate everything that you do. The Every 15 Minutes, that is such an impactful of program. Dino, thank you so much. I know that you you're a big part of putting all that together. I just, I go to it every time. It's, it shows at Santa Fe High School, wherever it shows that, and brings me to tears every time. So thank you so much for that. I wanted to say thank you to Blake Carter, President of the Metro, to thank you for being here. And thank you for all you do for Metro Park and the children there with their baseball and and getting everything together. I wanted to thank our President of the Women's Club, Frances Carver Hall, for stepping up, and your leadership is showing, and we're going to have a great year. And I just wanted to say, give my condolences, give our condolences and prayers to all the victims that lost their lives in the Monterey Park Dance Studio. And I wanted to give our condolences to our Mayor Navajoa, and also the moms that we lost for Johnny Chavaria and our former Chief Hayward. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank all the residents for being here tonight. Take time out of your busy schedules, your evening, and want to know what the heck's going on in your city. If you don't come to the council meetings, you may not be aware of things that happen and and the way things do happen. But really appreciate seeing all the faces here tonight. Staff, we got a great staff, as Sean, we got a lot of programs. Get get ready to to get back in action because February kicks it off. All of our committees go back into operation, and a lot of events are going to start happening. And I think we need to get all get in shape for the March 11 for the Shamrock Run. Congratulations to Mike on your promotion. To our new interns, Oscar and Leslie, photo contest winners, as Kwan said, that Heritage Park is a very, it's a kind of hidden gem for a lot of people, except for the residents that live here and attend. It's a great facility. It really is. It's beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. And I got to say something about the contest winner that brought back memories to me almost 25 years ago when I married my wife Jennifer. We got married right in front of that building, and it was a beautiful ceremony, and it was awesome. I want to thank all the first responders, fire, and police. And as they say, when we're running away from danger, you guys run into it. So. And Noe, I'm going to miss you, guy. I really am. And I know that, I don't know how many years it's been now that we created a CIP project. Before that, we didn't list. We didn't have that. And when I look at that list now to see the projects that have been completed, and the money that has been reinvested in our community, it's unbelievable. And for the residents, you only see things that are above ground. There's a lot of things that happen below ground or inside facilities, but it's still, it's part of your city. It's part of our infrastructure that we have to preserve and keep going. But, you know, and and I know sometimes it takes a while to get projects done, but there is a process. We, you know, we, we don't just do stuff on a whim. We, there is a process that we have to follow. And we're, we have to follow guidelines set by the state, especially when public works contracts that have to be put out to bid. We have to go through the bids. There have to be bid openings and all of that. So it doesn't happen overnight. It does take a while. But knowing, you may be leaving the city, but your legacy is going to be here for a long time with all the projects you've completed, and I thank you for that. So best you the, I wish you the best in your next adventure. So thank you for that. And with that, thank you. That's all I have tonight. Yes.
I just wanted to say too, Noe, I had you on my right side, my paper right here. Thank you so much for everything that you did for our community and for allowing me to be on the CIP. I loved it. And thank you. I'm going to miss you. And I wish you wouldn't go, but I can't, you know, we never hold people back to move forward. So thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
To all the new hires and new promotions, I mean, it's just great to see people moving up. And, you know, it's, it's one of those things where we have new people coming in and others that are retiring and leaving. And, and, you know, just to see the positive outlook that where the city's going, it's, it's, it's a blessing. I mean, our library, I know when Joyce, you know, had left, and then now we have, you know, our new librarian, and you're doing an amazing job. I mean, I'm hearing it from the schools, hearing it from the community. So just tell your staff, you know, from, you know, from all of us, just thank you and just keep up the the great work. I mean, nonstop, there's always events. I mean, it almost seems like our library is our new event center. So, you know, I mean, other cities have events, but the library is always doing a great job. Nothing against Wayne or Noe or Dino and, you know, Chad or mighty stuff, you know. So it's just, you know, thank you for all that you do. You know, when it comes to note, Mr. Negrete, thank you for, you know, the service that you've actually done in our, in our community, just the outlook, the positive outlook with our, with your employees. I mean, your, your, I mean, Public Works, I mean, you can tell they really hold you in high regards. And I know a lot of them are, the majority of them are sad to see you go. You know, I told them if they have any problems or concerns, I mean, he's in Peak Rivera, so just call him up, you know. So if any of you guys have family members that live in Peak Rivera, and they have public works concerns, Noe Negrete is your guy over there. So, you know, he's not that far away. So only that, on a somber note, I mean, Monterey Park, our hearts go out to them. Prayers, you know, it's, it's sad to see, you know, that how much what, you know, mental health, or nobody knows what is going on with the individuals that are doing or, you know, causing this much destruction. And I know that God knows and God has a plan. And, you know, sometimes we don't see it and why, why, why God is allowing these things. But, you know, it's for the prayers, you know, prayers for other people, not just for ourselves, but prayers for our family members, prayers for our loved ones. We all have things happening in our lives. I mean, every day should be Law Enforcement Week. Every day should be, you know, first responders, firefighters, you know, everything that you do. And not only that, that includes all of our staff. So I just, you know, ask God to always put a hedge of protection around all you guys. And thank you for serving the city of Santa Fe Springs. May God always bless you guys.
It's kind of hard going like last because you guys already said a lot of stuff. But first off, Noe, I want to say congratulations on the new hire, but we are going to miss you here because you are a staple in our community. And you've really developed this for the last 12 years, that the hard work and dedication that you've done. Very good job. So my heart is out to you, and I hope that you're happy over there. But if not, you can always come back. Thank you to all the law enforcement, first responders, for all the hard work that you guys do in our community. It's not just about, you know, protecting us, but actually giving back to us as as community members. And the things that you guys did for the toy drive, I think you guys are going to have to find a bigger venue because, you know, the amount of people that were there were just, yeah, was that, was that code, was that up to code all the people there for? I'm just kidding. Yes. But no, that was a fantastic event. Aaron, the hard work that you guys do day in and day out, you know, having to have a call, shots fired, you know, the first thing that you think of is, I got to make sure my officers are safe, and they got to make sure that they go home to their families every night. So I thank you guys for the hard work and dedication you do. It's never easy. So, and the firemen, you know, you guys, everybody just works hand in hand here in this community, and it's just awesome. On a better note, the library is the new event center. I challenge all five of us up here to go to this next pub trivia and be a team and have some liquid drinks. Oh, we won't say nothing right here. But no, I just want to say thank you, guys, from the bottom of my heart. I think you guys, we're really moving in the right direction as a city, as a whole, and as a community. And, you know, we do get things wrong sometimes, but we always want to make them right. So I thank you, guys, for everything that you do, day in and day out. And thank you, guys, and have a great week.
Being last is hard because everything's already been said. Everyone said a lot of it. A couple actually more positive notes, too. One of our youth leadership, Carla Cardenas, she actually is our resident Santa Fe. She is now working with Grace Napolitano in Washington. So it's great to see one of our young kids succeed and do that. And she's so proud, and she's so proud to be from Santa Fe Springs. That's, that's awesome. That's really, really good. The economic forecast was much better than we thought. I think what I got most out of it too was don't buy Bitcoin and buy land. That's the main thing of everything. The pub trivia, I think that was such a big hit. You heard it from, we need more. We need more of those. So great. And meeting with Archuleta, being so positive about how he wants to help out with our pool, ways what we can do, things about it, it's great. And it's, it's very positive knowing that we can have our pool back up maybe in a year or so. And that's, it's great. Captain, can't wait to see what else you're going to come up with this year. And Officer Salazar, you have, you have your hands full. Just, but it's great. Welcome. It's such a great thing to have you guys here and staff. Noe, we've been friends for over 30 years. I used to be Noe's stat girl at St. Paul. He was a baseball, both at St. Paul, and I was a stat girl, and that's how I met Noe. So full circle, we end up working here. So it's more than just coworker. It's, we're friends. And we will continue to be friends, and this will always be your city. And you'll always be family here. So congratulations. Great. We, you know, it's great going and having our families grow. So congratulations, Noe. What, I'm trying to just going over everything, anything else. That's, oh, the, all, I put invitations on everyone's desk. Santa Fe Springs Christian Church is having a play on February 23. It's Beauty and the Beast. So please, if you guys aren't doing, anything February 23, they're doing a beauty and beast. There's invitations for all the council members. Please go. And again, residents of Monterey Park, they were supposed to be a joyful thing, and to end it that way, it shouldn't be that way. It's, you know, we, we need more mental health. We need more. But again, it's, it's the officers that went in there with no questions asked to take care of, take care of the residents, and that means a lot because you never know. Excuse me right now, I'm just a little. Like you said, many of you guys know my husband. There's a standoff right now in Catalina, and there's some, they're shooting the deputies, and my husband's in the middle of it. So I, so please keep your deputies in prayer right now. Also, as Francis said, Mayor of Navajo, we've come to have a great relationship with them. We are, where there's a family. Navajo is our family. And when we hear one of the family members pass away, we all feel it. So on behalf of the city, we did send flowers, and the wife really said, thank you so much for us reaching out there to her. It means a lot that it's another country, but we're still like family. So at that, I would like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Darnell Calhoun, Deputy Riverside County Sheriff. Your friend Chavaria, father of Johnny Chavaria's employee, Barbara Hayward, mother, former Fire Chief Brent Hayward, and resident Anthony Martinez, who passed, senior, who just passed away this morning. So, meaning adjourn.